We're gonna get started. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will read the rule.
Counselor Vito.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Counselor Brown.
Yeah.
Counselor Bishop. Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Azaneda.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Pearl Lutanda.
Yeah.
Counselor Garcia. And Counselor Ray Cooperow. Ten members present, one absent. You have a call, Madam Chairman. First order of business, Fire Department Swearing In Ceremonies.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to suspend the rules so the Chief can conduct the swearing in of new firemen, but before I do, I just want to acknowledge our state representative, Daniel Ryan, who's in the room. Thank you for being here. Chief?
Thank you, Madam President, and first time preparing before you, congratulations. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
It's always a pleasure to be here before the Council for new appointments and for promotions, two of the most favorite things that I like to do in this business right now. So first, I present to you Edward McGarry for promotion to the rank of Deputy Chief. Deputy McGarry is a graduate of Boncible High School and has a bachelor's degree in fire science from Anna Maria College. He was appointed to the Chelsea Fire Department in August of 2000 after attending the Massachusetts Fire Academy Class 97 in 1992 and serving in the Sandwich Fire Department since 1993. He is certified in Fire Officer 1 and 2, Fire Prevention Officer 1, and Fire Instructor 1. He was promoted to the rank of Lieutenant in 2006 and Captain in 2008. He is also a veteran of the United States Marine Corps Reserves where he served from 1995 to 2003. His current assignment is Deputy in Charge of Fire Prevention. Deputy McGarry has three children, Zo, James, and Mary Beth. Madam Clerk?
Please raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Edward McGarry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a deputy chief.
As a deputy chief.
Of the Chelsea Fire Department.
Of the Chelsea Fire Department.
According to the best.
According to the best.
My abilities.
My abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
of Captain.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
Captain Rogers was hired in September of 2011 after transferring from the Wakefield
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Chelsea.
Of the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Deputy McGarry will have his badge pinned by his son, James McGarry. Fire Department where he served since 1993. He attended the Mass Fire Academy Class 104. He has an Associate's Degree in Fire Science from North Shore Community College, a Bachelor's Degree from Salem State, and a Master's in Public Administration from Anna Maria College. He was promoted to Lieutenant in October of 2015. He is currently assigned to Tower 1, Group 2. Madam Clerk?
Please raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Phil Rogers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a lieutenant.
As a lieutenant.
Of the Chelsea Fire Department.
Of the Chelsea Fire Department.
According to the best.
According to the best.
My abilities.
My abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Chelsea.
Of the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
First Lieutenant Glass will be pinned by his wife Karen. And Lieutenant Bishop will be pinned by his mom Christine. Members of the Council, thank you for letting us appear before you and...
I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute recess so the families can take some pictures with their new lieutenants and captains and...thank you. All right, we're back. Back in business.
First item on the agenda, memorials and celebratory resolutions. First resolution introduced by Counselor Garcia and all members of the City Council. We've had the International White Ribbon Campaign as an effort to urge men to speak out in opposition to violence against women as a remembrance of the Montreal massacre in 1991 tragedy when one man murdered 14 women in Montreal, Canada. And whereas Jane Doe Inc. launched Massachusetts White Ribbon Day in 2008 to engage mental health and violence against women, men, and children, and whereas this year's Massachusetts White Ribbon Day will be recognized on the first Wednesday in March, a day proclaimed by Chelsea City Manager as White Ribbon Day for the purpose of joining hundreds of men and boys in a pledge to embrace visions of manhood that foster respect, safety, and equality. And whereas this year's Massachusetts White Ribbon Day aims to strengthen the Massachusetts Foundation for responding to the needs of victims regardless of gender identity or sexual orientation and recognizes that victims of sexual assault and domestic violence may be LGBTQ, elderly, disabled, or male. And whereas the White Ribbon Day pledge states from this day forward, I promise to be part of the solution in ending violence against women and any gender-based violence. Whereas our municipality wishes to join with others across the Commonwealth to raise awareness of White Ribbon Day and to support survivors of violence, now therefore be it resolved on this date, 26th day of February 2018 of Chelsea City Council, in our representative capacity of the residents of Chelsea, do hereby take pledge, recognize White Ribbon Day and from this day forth will participate actively in the campaign to end domestic violence.
Chair recognizes Counselor Rodriguez.
Quickly speak on it.
Seeing none, you have the floor.
So this is on behalf of Judith who took the lead of it. She couldn't be here today because something she had to take care of, but White Ribbon Day is an international day where men pledge to never commit, excuse, or stay silent about men violence towards women. Now, this is a narrative to about all genders-based violence. So especially on Wednesday, there's a ceremony that, again, I'll announce later, but February 28th, there'll be a flag raising for this in front of the City Hall at 9:30.
Anybody else wish to speak on it? Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules to present the resolution to Harbor Cove.
Okay, so we'll suspend for a couple of minutes so you can present the resolution. Seeing no objections?
No.
Are there any representatives from Harbor Cove here? Hi, come on up.
Next resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson. Whereas it is through learning that we become enlightened and come to understand each other more clearly, and whereas the Black History Committee along with Lewis H. Latimer Society, Ron Robinson, the Chelsea Black Community, Joan Cromwell, Henry Wilson, Celeste Williams, and Sharon Caulfield, Associate Dean of Bunker Hill Community College, continue to play a significant role in presenting Black history and cultural celebrations and programming to our community. And whereas the End of the Month Celebration Honoring Chelsea Trailblazers, High School Coaches Hall of Fame, Joanne Lee Nevers, retired teacher and counselor at Chelsea High School for 34 years, Betty Boyd, Executive Director of School Administration and Finance, Jerry McHugh, Shakur Sanford Village Talks, Chelsea Restoration Corporation, Eastern Salt Company, Chalet Mahoney, and Joe McNamie, Danielle Cruz and Cruz Construction, Associate Dean of Bunker Hill Community College, Sharon Caulfield, and U.S. Olympic Festival Team Gold Medalist John Lee, now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby recognizes the End of the Month Celebration honoring Chelsea Trailblazers and wishes to thank the Black History Committee, Lewis H. Latimer Society, and Chelsea's Black Community remembering the past, celebrating the future for their contributions to the City of Chelsea and beyond.
Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
I thought we should end the suspension. I'm not going to get into a big, long discussion because I feel anyone who was here is interested in seeing the honorees. On Wednesday night, we'll get more into their bio. So as I call you, you can come forward and we're going to grab a quick meeting outside before we leave. Joanne Lee Nevers, she's a high school coach, Hall of Fame. Ms. Betty Boyd, retired teacher and counselor at Chelsea High for 34 years. Mr. Jerry McHugh, Executive Director of School Administration and Finance. Shakur Sanford Village Talks and Chelsea Restoration. Chalet Mahoney and Joe McNamie, Eastern Salt Company. Danielle Cruz from Cruz Construction. Sharon Caulfield, Associate Dean of Bunker Hill Community College. Also a member of the Black History Committee. Johnny Lee, U.S. Olympic Festival Team Gold.
Is that it? No, he asked, there will be a short meeting for everyone that was presented a resolution outside of the chambers.
Public speaking.
That's what he wanted. Public speaking? I don't know why he did that.
Call it out again. Anybody for public speaking?
Anybody for public speaking?
One? Shakur?
Shakur. Do you want to speak? The podium is right there. State your name and address for the record.
For the record, my name is Shakur Sanford. I wanted just to mention today that on March 2nd, Friday, this Friday, we'll be having an event at the Chelsea Boys and Girls Club for Village Talks. Village Talks is a program that I've designed to work with the youth. We invite entrepreneurs to come speak, share their stories, talk a little bit about their challenges and the obstacles that they face on a day-to-day basis when building a business. What we're going to be having this Friday is two great speakers that will be joining us, but more importantly, we'll have the pizza, the food, and all that type of stuff for the kids. And I think that if you guys have anybody in mind that would be interested in attending, please do reach out to me before we leave. We can get you guys registered for the event. It's a free event. In addition to talks like that, we also do financial literacy programs and such at the Chelsea Boys and Girls Club. That's my spiel. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else for public speaking? Going once? Going twice?
We have the minutes of the special meeting, February 5th, 2018, and a regular meeting, February 5th, 2018.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bishop.
Under suspension. Communication from the City Manager. First communication, administrative order on Cultural Council. Dear Councilors pursuant to Section 618 of the City of Chelsea Charter, I am writing to notify you that I have promulgated a new administrative order regarding the Cultural Council. At the request of the Cultural Council, I have increased the membership of the Council from five to seven members. Expect to submit to the City Council prospective candidates for these new positions shortly.
Any movers? Chair addresses Counselor Brown.
Accept these minutes. I mean this order.
Accept the following. Set the following communication to suspension.
Next communication, nonprofit contracts. I am writing in response to the recent Council order requesting information about the contracts that the city has with its nonprofit partners. The city currently has 12 active contracts with its nonprofit partners. Three with Capic, three with Chelsea Collaborative, two with Roca, and one each with Not Suffering Mental Health Association, the Neighborhood Developers, Massachusetts General Hospital, Chelsea, and Mystic Valley Eldo Services. A list of the contracts, their values, and end dates are set forth in the attached spreadsheets. For each of the contracts, they have included a scope of services, a budget, and information on the number of clients served. Those documents should provide all the...
Chair recognizes Counselor Brown.
I accept the communication with all the filings together for all the records and waive the rest of the reading.
He asked to waive the rest of the reading and accept the file under communication if there are no objections.
Okay, so would you like to... No, we can't. We can have it. You can have a conference or we can have it for our own reading.
So do you move to send it to a subcommittee on conference?
Right.
Okay. Under suspension, seeing no objections. So moved.
The next communication from the City Manager, Quarterly Hiring Report. Dear Councilors pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 112.02, I have enclosed the required statistical quarterly report on hiring for the 12-month period from January 1st, 2017 through December 31, 2017. I will be available to answer any questions.
Counselor Brown?
Accept the filing under communication.
Under suspension.
Yes.
Seeing no objections.
The next communication, Appointments to Boards and Commissions.
I'm sorry. One to second reading. This is, I don't have, I'm missing stuff. No, it's this, you never did this one, the utility. You never did the utilities.
Utility company? Something ran?
Yeah, yeah.
Second reading.
Our boys and commissions, yeah, appointments have to go to a second reading.
Quarterly hiring.
Right here.
Utility. Let's see if something stuck together maybe.
Yeah. We skipped something in the agenda. We're just trying to...
It was stuck together, okay.
Yeah.
There it is. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yeah, no problem. That's what I'm here for.
We have the utility company trenches. I am writing in response to the recent Council order requesting that I ensure that utility companies are properly restoring the city's streets when they dig up for repairs. Please note that the city's Department of Public Works does have a procedure in place to ensure that in these circumstances, streets are restored at no cost to the taxpayers. Specifically, each time a utility has granted a street opening permit to conduct a utility repair, money is set aside in an escrow account to ensure that the street is properly restored. The city will not release these funds until it has inspected the restoration trench and determined it is satisfactory. Naturally, there may be occasions when a trench fails after DPW has approved the repair and released escrow funds. In those circumstances, if the fault lies with the utility company, the DPW has the ability to refuse to issue a subsequent street opening permit until a prior failed trench is rectified. If any city council is aware of a location where a trench or spot repair from prior utility work has failed, please feel free to notify me. I will have the Department of Public Works investigate and take appropriate action.
Counselor Cooperow?
Yeah.
What's the motion?
Step down.
A step down following communication under suspension of no objections. Go ahead.
I hear this here, right? Whatever this piece of paper says, but I don't think it holds true. Go down my street. They've done utility work. They come back and there's big mounds. So these utility companies ain't really doing what they say they're supposed to do. Here it says we have money on escrow pulling from them. So do we give them their money even though they don't do what they're supposed to? I could show you pictures of streets where they've done work and there's dents, indentations, and then it's up to the city, the taxpayers, to redo the streets and pay for it. They should be responsible. And here it says you should be brought up to code. So whoever inspects it, I don't know what they're inspecting. Are they inspecting the lumps and holes that are there? They should be brought up to codes the way that they say they're supposed to be. So I want them, whenever it's done, to report back to the council and show us a prior picture when it was done and when it was repaired. That way you can compare to see if the work was actually done. Because I don't think it is. The constituents of my district, they're always complaining. There's holes all over the place. They're not fixed properly. Thank you.
Counselor Bishop?
Same. Areas in my district, District 1, Sagamore Avenue from one end to the other was dug up with a large trench going down one side of the street, and it's a mess now. So am I to assume that there's money available?
Sharon Caulfield, Associate Dean of Monte Hill Community College.[13.61][13.61](applause) Also a member of the Black History Committee.[22.02][22.02](applause)
No, he asked, there will be a short meeting for everyone that was presented a resolution outside of the chambers.
Public speaking?
That's what he wanted. Public speaking? I don't know why he did that.
Call it out again. Anybody for public speaking?
Anybody for public speaking?
One? You made that number? Shakur? Right? Shakur or something?
Shakur. Do you want to speak? The podium is right there. State your name and address for the record.
For the record, my name is Shakur Sandford. I wanted just to mention today that on March 2nd, Friday, this Friday, we'll be having an event at the Chelsea Boys and Girls Club for Village Talks. Village Talks is a program that I've designed to work with the youth. We invite entrepreneurs to come speak, share their stories, talk a little bit about their challenges and the obstacles that they face on a day-to-day basis when building a business. What we're going to be having this Friday is two great speakers that will be joining us, but more importantly, we'll have the pizza, the food, and all that type of stuff for the kids. And I think that if you guys have anybody in mind that would be interested in attending, please do reach out to me before we leave. We can get you guys registered for the event. It's a free event. In addition to talks like that, we also do financial literacy programs and such at the Chelsea Boys and Girls Club. That's my spiel. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else for public speaking? Going once? Going twice?
We have the minutes of the special meeting, February 5th, 2018, and a regular meeting, February 5th, 2018.
Chair recognizes Councilor Bishop.
Admitts.
Under suspension.
Madam President. Communications from the City Manager. First communication, administrative order on Cultural Council. Dear Councilors pursuant to Section 618 of the City of Chelsea Charter, I am writing to notify you that I have promulgated a new administrative order regarding the Cultural Council. At the request of the Cultural Council, I have increased the membership of the Council from five to seven members. Expect to submit to the City Council prospective candidates for these new positions shortly.
Any movers? Chair recognizes Councilor Brown.
Accept these minutes. I mean this order.
Except the following:
To set the file of communication to suspension.
Next communication, nonprofit contracts. I am writing in response to the recent council order requesting information about the contracts that the city has with its nonprofit partners. The city currently has 12 active contracts with its nonprofit partners. Three with Capic, three with Chelsea Collaborative, two with Roca, and one each with Nutzoff Mental Health Association, the Neighborhood Developers, Massachusetts General Hospital, Chelsea, and Mystic Valley Eldo Services. A list of the contracts, their values, and end dates are set forth in the attached spreadsheets. For each of the contracts, they have included a scope of services, a budget, and information on the number of clients served. Those documents should provide all the:
Chair recognizes Councilor Brown.
Accept the communication with all the filings together for all the records and waive the rest of the reading.
He asked to waive the rest of the reading and accept a file under communication if there are no objections. Okay, so would you like to?
No, we can't. We can have it. You can have a conference, or we can have it for our own reading.
So, do you move to send it to a subcommittee on conference?
Right.
Okay.
Well, Bishop, yep.
Under suspension, seeing no objections. So moved.
Okay. The next communication from the City Manager, Quarterly Hiring Report. Dear Councilors pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 112.02, I have enclosed the required statistical quarterly report on hiring for the 12-month period from January 1st, 2017 through December 31, 2017. I will be available to answer any questions.
Councilor Brown?
Accept the filing under communication.
Under suspension.
Yes.
Seeing no objections.
The next communication, Appointments to Boards and Commissions.
I'm sorry. One to second reading. This is, I don't have, I'm missing stuff. No, it's this, you never did this one, the utility. You never did the utilities.
Utility company? Something ran?
Yeah, yeah.
Second reading, yep.
Our boys and commissions, yeah, appointments have to go to a second reading.
Quarterly hiring. Utility. Let's see if something stuck together, maybe.
Yeah. We skipped something in the agenda, we're just trying to.
It was stuck together, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
There it is. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yeah, no problem. That's what I'm here for.
We have the utility company trenches. I am writing in response to the recent council order requesting that I ensure that utility companies are properly restoring the city streets when they dig up for repairs. Please note that the city's Department of Public Works does have a procedure in place to ensure that, in these circumstances, streets are restored at no cost to the taxpayers. Specifically, each time a utility has granted a street opening permit to conduct a utility repair, money is set aside in an escrow account to ensure that the street is properly restored. The city will not release these funds until it has inspected the restoration trench and determined it is satisfactory. Naturally, there may be occasions when a trench fails after DPW has approved the repair and released escrow funds. In those circumstances, if the fault lies with the utility company, the DPW has the ability to refuse to issue a subsequent street opening permit until a prior failed trench is rectified. If any city council is aware of a location where a trench or spot repair from prior utility work has failed, please feel free to notify me. I will have the Department of Public Works investigate and take appropriate action.
Councilor Cooperow?
Yeah.
What's the motion?
A step down file of communication under suspension of the no objections. Go ahead.
I hear this here, right? Whatever this piece of paper says, but I don't think it holds true. Go down my street, they've done utility work, they come back, and there's big mounds. So these utility companies ain't really doing what they say they're supposed to do. Here it says we have money on escrow, pull them from them. So, do we give them their money even though they don't do what they're supposed to? I could show you pictures of streets where they've done work, and there's dents, indentations, and then it's up to the city, the taxpayers, to redo the streets and pay for it. They should be responsible. And here it says you should be brought up to code. So whoever inspects it, I don't know what they're inspecting. Are they inspecting the lumps and holes that are there? They should be brought up to codes the way that they say they're supposed to be. So, I want them, whenever it's done, to report back to the council and show us a prior picture when it was done and when it was repaired. That way you can compare to see if the work was actually done. Because I don't think it is. The constituents of my district, they're always complaining. There's holes all over the place. They're not fixed properly. Thank you.
Councilor Bishop?
Same. Areas in my district, District 1, Sagamore Avenue from one end to the other was dug up with a large trench going down one side of the street, and it's a mess now. So, am I to assume that there's money available to fix this? That there's money being kept in escrow? I'm certainly going to look into it and find out if there is, because the taxpayers shouldn't be paying for it. The utilities companies recently, we're voting on it tonight, $17,000 to move one hole, so that they're not knocking down the connections for the lights. They're very quick to charge the city, but I don't think the city's quick enough to charge them. And I think I would like going forward to have that more of an issue. Thank you.
Next order of business.
The next order of business, second readings. We have five items by Councilor Bishop.
I move to waive the reading under the five.
You are all familiar with them. I ask for one roll call unless someone objects to that. If not, I move one roll call. In roll call, and speaking on the orders. I think we're all familiar with them. We spoke about them at the last meeting and the meeting before that. And it's the $35,000 for fixing the lights up and down Broadway, $17,744 for the DPW for street repair, $30,000 to sidewalk and streets, for the city manager to erect some new signs around the city, $50,000 for the improved lighting on Broadway. Wait a minute. I'm sorry, the $35,000 was for the data processing, $50,000 for street lighting, $10,000 for the rodent program. Okay, and the clerk will read what the five things are, and I move one roll call.
The first one?
Yes, Councilor Abad.
Will be abstaining from the vote in case of potential conflict of interest on Order Number C, as a family member owns property nearby where that pole is being removed. So I will be abstaining from the vote.
Okay. Is abstaining from the vote possible?
Be a potential conflict of interest.
Okay. The first one would be $35,000 from free cash to supplement the FY 2018 MIS Contract Services Account for Data Reporting Transparency Software, OpenGov. $17,744 appropriation from free cash to supplement FY 2018 DPW Streets and Sidewalk Division Maintenance Citywide Account for pole removal at Broadway and Williams. $30,000 from free cash to supplement the FY 2018 DPW Streets and Sidewalks Division Street Signs Account for new welcoming and neighborhood signage. $50,000 free cash to supplement FY 2018 DPW Streets and Sidewalks Division Maintenance Citywide Account for improved Broadway lighting. And we have $10,000 from free cash to supplement the FY 2018 DPW Streets and Sidewalks Division Pest Control Account for rodent control. Let me just say, recused. A yes would be to adopt.
All five.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Tihara?
Yes.
Counselor Abadina, recused. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Cooperow? Ten members in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion adopted. New business, Madam Chairman. First item under new business. Order introduced by Counselor Brown. Order that the city manager instruct DPW to paint the crosswalks at the corners of Street and Williams Street.
Counselor Brown?
I'll just sort of amend it, Madam President.
Seeing no objections.
Order introduced by Counsel Tihara, request that Traffic and Parking Commission put up a no parking here to corner in front of One Franklin Ave before the driveway.
Chair recognizes Counsel Tihara.
Accept and file under suspension, if there's no objection.
Order introduced by Counsel Tihara, request that the city manager submit a review of the city's contract with Comcast in order to evaluate them and consider what other companies like FiOS can offer.
Chair recognizes Counselor Tihara.
Accept and file under suspension, if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
After the floor.
So, over the last two-plus years, I've bumped into a lot of constituents, particularly elderly and people on budgets, fixed incomes, that feel that their only option in Chelsea is Comcast or the big old antennas. This is just a request to start a conversation and see, you know, see what other options we can provide for people who are of fixed incomes. That's it. Thank you.
Wanted to introduce by Counsel Ray Cooperow, order that the city manager instruct the city solicitor to write up an ordinance to require all new police and fire hires to live in the city of Chelsea for a period of five years.
Chair recognizes Counsel Ray Cooperow.
I'd like to look up on the roll call vote, and I'd like to amend something in it.
Seeing no objections. What would you like to amend it to?
Can I talk on it?
Oh, sure.
Who said amend?
That's what I'm asking. What are you amending it to? What are you amending?
Oh, I'm amending that in over here, it says, "Counsel, write up on ordinance." I'd like to have it written up by the next city council meeting. I'd like the city solicitor to write it up for the next city council meeting. Has a time limit. There's no time limit on this thing to say when to do it. I would like to have a time limit put on it.
So, to be submitted by next council meeting?
Yes.
Any objections, Counselor Brown?
You can't vote on something that doesn't have a deadline on it. If we can, I can let it go. But I believe if you're asking to amend it because it doesn't read properly, we shouldn't vote on it.
We would be voting on the creation of the ordinance, and he's asking for it to be submitted by the next council meeting, right?
He's changing the order, correct?
He's amended it.
He's amending it so that, to include a deadline. Okay, did you want to speak on it?
Yes.
Okay.
For many, many years, I've been trying to make, not make, all the people that work here live in our city. I think it's a good thing for them to live here. Other cities have it. I don't understand why ours can't. They should live here, like the rest of us. We live here. We pay all the taxes, we do all these things, and we love our city. It's not saying that they don't love their city, but there's an extra Karen when you live in an area. I don't care what says. I'm not saying that they don't love the city, they don't care about the city. They care about the city, they love the city. And this only affects people that are being hired now. Everybody else is grandfathered in, so anybody that's here already, that doesn't affect them at all. So there's nothing wrong with wanting the new hirees to live with us, and it's only for a five-year period. It's a very minimal amount of time. Look at me, I've been here 42. My rest of the colleagues been here all their lives. They have no issue with it. None of us have issues with living here. If you have an issue living here with us, and I always hear it from other counselors and everybody, they say, "Well, there's no place to live. Oh, there's not enough qualified people. Oh, there's this and there's that." Life is not what you want. Life is what it is. If you want to work here and you want to live here, you have, you know, you got to come. We put up with it, we're not complaining. The people that live here are not complaining. I'm not saying, "Oh, well, I don't like the terms, so I'm going to leave." It's fine by me, I raised my family here. Most of the counselors here, they grew up here, have no problem living here. So, if they have no problem, why should anybody else? They're getting the money from us. You know, they're working here. I'm not saying, again, I'm saying, I'm not saying that they don't love my city. Yes, they love the city, but there's nothing wrong with living here. If you don't want to live here, why? Because you, what is it? You're sending a message to everybody else that, "Well, you know, it's a nice place to work, but I don't want to live there." Why is that? What kind of message are you sending to the rest of the people around us? That, "Well, we're good enough to take your money, but we're not good enough to live there." That's not the message you want to send. You want to send that this city is good for everybody. There's room here, and this city's an up-and-coming city, like they say. So there's no issue anymore with it. It's a great place to live and work. So, and I'm not requesting that they live here forever. Five years is not a long time. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on it? All right, so for clarity, we're doing a roll call with the amended version, asking for the ordinance to be produced by the next council meeting.
City manager instruct the city solicitor to write up an ordinance to require all new police and fire hires to live in the city of Chelsea for a period of five years. The amendment would be to report back to the council by the next council meeting.
So what's the city solicitor's requirement? Can you explain that to me?
He's requesting an ordinance to require all new police and fire hires to live in the city of Chelsea.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to be voting against this measure. I appreciate Counsel Ray Cooperow's persistence on this issue, but I think that the council has spoken loudly and clearly over the years that we're not in favor, or the community's not in favor, rather, the councils have not supported the residency requirement. And as I stand by the previous comment or opinion, that I'd rather focus my energies, and I hope the city council also will focus their energies, on making Chelsea a better place to live, rather than a place to force to be lived here. And I was hoping that, you know, my colleague would work in that matter. So, again, I'm going to be consistent and vote against this measure, and I urge my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you. Counselor Bishop?
I've been here a little bit longer than Counsel Ray Cooperow. I've been here all my life. And I don't want to enter how many years that is, but it's quite a few. Chelsea's a great place to live, as far as I'm concerned. I have no problem living here. I had the choice of moving out many years ago if I chose to do so. I chose to stay here. I've built two homes in the city of Chelsea, brand-new homes, and lived in both of them. Lived in both of them. My family, my both grandmothers on both sides were born here in Chelsea. So I've been around the city for a few years. Now, I'm very upset on payday, because three-quarters of our paychecks go to Saugus, Reading, Linfield, all over the place. And I'm surprised we don't get a note from them saying, "Thank you for the cash circulation in our city," because that money is not circulating here in Chelsea. No. It's going elsewhere. Now, when you're hired in a new position, if you're as a policeman, a fayman, or whatever, and if you don't want to live in the city, go somewhere else. Don't take the job. Refuse the job. Somebody will gladly take it. I think it's a good thing for police and fire to live in the city. I've had many friends in the police department over the years that have lived here, and it's a great thing to have policemen living next door. So I really don't, I favor this effort. I certainly will be voting for it. I don't see what the problem is with it, truthfully. I want to see Chelsea made a better place to live, too. But to say, "We're hiring you at $100,000 a year, but go live in Saugus," is not my idea of a smart thing to do. So I think when most people say they have to live here for five years, when the five years is up, they're not going to go running out of the city either. So I think this would be a good thing. I think we need to look and start saying to ourselves, gee, where is this payroll every week going? So I am in favor of a residency requirement, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Anybody else wish to speak on it? All right, so the roll call will be to adopt it?
The amendment. The roll calls on the amendment, yep.
Adopt the amendment, yeah, correct.
Voting on the amendment first?
Yep. If the amendment's adopted, the motion carries. Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Tihara?
Yes.
Counsel Abadina?
No.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia, absent. Counselor Ray Cooperow?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favor, one opposed, one absent. The amendment carries, the motion is adopted. Next order under new business, order introduced by Counsel Pilatanda. Request that the Traffic and Parking Commission look into improving the overall resident parking program to better benefit the residents of Chelsea.
Chair recognizes Counsel Pilatanda.
Can I speak on it first?
Sure. On the floor.
It seems like the residential parking program that we have in effect now doesn't seem to be working too well, especially with the visitor's passes. You get two visitor's passes if you want to buy them from the city. You can only use them one day a week. So if somebody's coming to stay at your residence, somebody's coming from out of town, wants to stay for a week, at a time or longer, the visitor's passes are only good for those two days. I'm sure you can get compensation from the parking commission, that seems to be more of a hassle. The residential parking sticker that people get goes from 2:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the morning. By the time everybody comes home from work at 2:00, everybody's already in their house, so 2:00 in the morning, it doesn't really work for too many people. People that are coming home at 5:00 o'clock at night find it hard to find a space in front of their house, because there's people that are already parked there that even left their car in the city of Chelsea, are just coming home from their work job, and people can't find a place to park. I mean, I think the parking program should, needs to be looked into, maybe it could be tweaked, changed around a little bit to better serve the residents. Currently, right now, there's a lot of development going on in the city of Chelsea, and we find that people that are working in new hotels or other things in the city are taking up spot parking spaces that the residents could have. So I just think it needs to be looked into. Thank you.
Next order introduced by Counsel Pilatanda, request that the Traffic and Parking Commission look into changing the hours of Chelsea City Hall parking lot for residential parking to 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., with the exception of a snow emergency, and report back to the council their findings.
Counseler Pilatanda?
Can I speak on it?
Seeing no objections.
Thank you. So coming right now, the hours at the City Hall parking lot, from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. for City Hall business, and from 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. for residential parking. It seems like after 4:00 presidential business during the city hours is closed, the residents are parking in the parking lot. With the exception of us coming to meetings here at City Hall, business going on at City Hall, it's hard to find a parking space for not only the city councils, but for the residents that are coming into the City Hall to do business. People even parking around City Hall, like especially this evening, there's nowhere to park. So you have to park far away in somebody's residential spot, but there's no residential spot to park because of the residential parking program as well. So I think the hours should be changed from, like I said, 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. That gives more people time to do business at City Hall. Thank you.
Next order introduced by Counsel Pilatanda, request that the city manager instruct the DPW director to look into adjusting the settings of the LED streetlights throughout the city for better visibility.
Counsel Pilatanda?
Under suspension.
Under, yep, seeing no objections.
So it seems like when we first introduced these LED lights into the city of Chelsea with a prior city manager, Jay Ash, that we were told that the settings on the streetlights had three settings on them. So when we first put them in, they were at a lower setting, and I think they got raised to a medium setting, but it seems like there's certain dark spots throughout the city. So I think we should have them raised up as high as they can go throughout the city so there is no dark spots, and there's more visibility for people to walk around at night. People won't be afraid to walking down downtown Chelsea or anywhere on the side streets in Chelsea, they'll feel safer that way. So I instruct the city manager to look into talking to the DPW director, and maybe we can get those streetlights raised up. Thank you.
Next order introduced by Counsel Robinson and Counsel Pilatanda, request that the city manager and ISD give an update on the status of the Irish Club.
Chair recognizes Counsel Robinson.
Objection unanimously under suspension.
There are no objections, seeing none, you have the floor, Counsel.
I can just be brief. Actually, I had an opportunity to go on an inspection with ISD and the Fire Department to visit the Irish Club. By right, they can open with 96 members upstairs. They will be looking to expand downstairs, but they will need a special permit to do that. I have got some conflicting things as to how many actual members in the club, and they have a membership of 200.
have a membership of 250 members. You know, I do have concerns, and one of my questions to the gentleman who I had an opportunity to speak to, my question was, "Why Chelsea? If you have 250 members, why Chelsea?" He didn't have an answer for me. So I will be paying attention to this, and when a special permit comes up, I think we need to be able to go and voice our opinion as to what our concern is.
Counselor Pilatanda?
Yeah, there seems to be a lot of concerns from the resident in the area. Main concern is parking. It seems to me that if the club, the Irish Club, gets to do the basement over in that building, like my fellow counsel said, it's 250 actual members, where are they going to be parking? And that's going to cause a big problem for the residents in the area with parking limited as it is. So it's a big concern right now, so hopefully we can get a update on what's happening with the Irish Club and move forward, hopefully with a better vision of what they plan to do and where these cars will be parking. Thank you.
Next order introduced by Counselor Bishop. Counselor Robinson, Counselor Tejada, Counselor Lopez, Recupero, Brown, Rodriguez, Pilatanda, and Demali. Anyone else missed the sign they can sign on? Order that the city manager transfer the sum of $20 million from free cash account to the city of Chelsea stabilization account.
Counselor Bishop?
I move to adopt under suspension.
No objections?
I first want to thank my fellow counselors for co-signing this order with me. We are all aware of the amount of free cash, and I don't like that term, "free cash," but that's what it's called, "free cash," and that denotes that it's money that we have to, or should get rid of. If it's free, hey, why don't we spend it here or spend it there? I just don't like that wording of "free cash." We are about to enter into the budget process, which is the number one, most important thing that this council has to do this year. It's very difficult going into a budget process with that kind of money laying around unaccounted for, not unaccounted for, unattached. So my request is a very simple one. I'm asking that the city manager take that money out of the free cash account and put it in the stabilization account. Currently, we have $5 million in the stabilization account, which is great. And I think if things go sour in the state economy, the federal economy, the local economy, or all three at one time, which does happen, that $5 million might get us through a year or maybe into the second year. If we had to go there and say, "In order to keep the city running, we need to take that money and use it for operating expenses." By putting this other money in there, I think that the city would be solid for a good five years if things turn sour. We heard the State of the City message this evening. The city manager did a great job presenting it, and I have to say that he's a very lucky man, because he gets to be the city manager in Chelsea when things are good. But I've been here, and some of you may remember when things weren't so good, and things can turn sour very quickly. So if we have all of this extra money, I say, "Let's put it in the stabilization fund," which is not spending it, we're just moving it from the checking account from the city into the savings account. I like to say, "From the debit card to the savings account," because sometimes with that money laying around, it's very easy to spend it. The city manager is doing his job, and his job is to provide services, and his job is to spend that money. Our job is completely different from his. It's our job as city councilors to make sure that if there's a huge problem, we have that money put aside so that we can fall back on it. Now, I was involved in city government years ago when things weren't so good. What did we do? We didn't have a stabilization fund then. We had to lay people off. 50 people one year, 40 people another year, and that affects people's lives, it affects their mortgages, it affects everything that they do, their children. We don't want to get into that again. So I think it would be wise to put this money into the stabilization fund and be very hesitant to spend it. We have an excess of $34 million. The city manager has already said he would like to use some of that money to pay the final payment on the Carter, on the Clark School, which I think is a good thing to do, not have to go out and borrow. Use that money to pay off the final payment in cash, money well spent, in my opinion. He has also stated that he would like to use some, a lot of that money, $4 million, to use toward the capital improvement program. I have no problem with that either. Instead of going out and borrowing the money for the capital improvement program, he would like to use the cash to pay for it. I can understand that. I don't agree with everything in the capital improvement program. I must say that off the start. However, I think that's a wise thing to do. By putting this money in the stabilization account, I believe it's going to greatly improve our bond rating, and we will save a lot of money going forward on what we have borrowed. Bond rating can be adjusted upwards. I'm sure it would be with that kind of money in the stabilization account. So I think this is a very wise thing to do. And before we spend any money out of the stabilization account, we need to think very seriously about it. I sent everyone an email concerning what the stabilization fund makeup is, and I think, you know, you must have all read it. And, you know, it could be moved out of there for operating expenses if you have to have it. So we're not spending it, we're moving it from the checking to the savings. Again, I thank the councils for supporting it, and I don't know if we need a roll call, do we need a roll call? No? Thank you.
Okay. So move it to a second reading. I'll monitor, anything that has to do with money has to go to a second reading.
We'll transfer it around. We'll transfer it around, but.
This is not spending money. This is asking the city manager to initiate the process to move the money. So all we're doing is recommending something to the city manager. We're not, it's not a money.
I understand, Counselor, but I believe our council rules state that any money matters have to go to a second reading. We'll move it to a second reading, just for the sake of transparency, but I'm pretty sure the council rules state that we have, all money matters have to go to a second reading.
Next order.
Next order.
Order introduced by Counselor Vido. Order that a special subcommittee be established to assist the city manager in determining the needs of a teen community recreation center.
Counselor Rodriguez? Table under suspension.
Order introduced by Counselor Vido and Counselor Lopez. Order that a subcommittee conference be scheduled to discuss expansion of recycling across the city.
Chair recognizes Counselor Lopez.
Adopted under suspension unanimously, and I would like to speak on it, please. This is a topic that we've been talking, we talked last year about it, to implement recycling in the whole city, and we talked about that last year and nothing happened. So I think it's time to bring it up again and so we can implement it, and I think it's something good that our community is recycling, and a lot of people in the community are asking for this recycle bins, and I think it's time for us to talk about it again. Thank you.
Nope. Next order of business?
Next order introduced by Counselor Robinson, members of the Chelsea City Council. Whereas the shift from a low-income to economically disadvantaged definition of poor students reduced in 2016 FY 2017 and 2017 FY 2018, council of low-income students in a small number of school districts, including Chelsea Public Schools, whereas in Chelsea, we went from 5,833 low-income students in 2015 FY 16 to 4,008 in 2016 FY 2017, a loss of 1,825 students of poverty and $2,349,740 in foundation budget. Whereas in terms of Chapter 78, most districts, 92% in FY 17 and 95% in FY 18, were better off under this new definition and this desile allocation, except for a small handful of gateway city school districts with high numbers of immigrant students, in particular Chelsea Public Schools. Whereas the state recognized the imperfections with the method used to calculate the economically disadvantaged students, attempted to make whole in FY 17 and FY 18 with a transitional relief allocation. Whereas under the leadership of the Chelsea Public Schools Superintendent, in 2017, a small working group worked to resolve the discrepancy of the count of economically disadvantaged students prior to FY 19 budget, and the group made recommendations to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Whereas the DESC failed in the new calculation to take the recommendations to include homeless, foster care, migrant, and immigrant students in the accounting method, which would have further increased the accurate count of economically disadvantaged students. Whereas the DESC did implement the recommendation to include all mass health categories, which improved the accurate count of economically disadvantaged students, increasing Chelsea's count by an additional 799 students. Whereas to offset increases in the Chapter 70 budget, the FY 19 Governor's Budget decreases the per pupil allocation for poor students in Chelsea from 4,400 to 4,100, resulting in a loss of funding of $1,077,100 for Chelsea Public Schools alone. Whereas students of poverty are more expensive to educate this year FY 19 compared to last year, it is against our core beliefs as leaders to allow our education funds to be decreased simply because we have become more accurate this year in identifying our economically disadvantaged students. Therefore, be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council stands behind and supports Chelsea Public Schools and the Superintendent in their advocacy to continue to seek accurate counts of economically disadvantaged students and to maintain per pupil allocations used in the FY 18 foundation budgets. The Chelsea City Council asks the legislature to increase the Governor's Budget to include and make whole the pupil economically disadvantaged allocation in school districts. Our students' futures are too variable, too short-chained.
Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
Suspension. And if we can, I'd like for a copy to be sent to the Governor, the Speaker of the House, and our delegation. And if I can just kind of be brief on a couple comments. As it says in the resolution, the number of students that we're not getting any credit for is a significant amount that we're at a loss of over $2 million in some of the categories. And then, and long as we're not allowing kids to be counted under mass health, we can't get reimbursed for those 1,800 students or better. But actually, the overall state Chapter 70 underfunding, the total underfunding, like infringed benefits, is 5.7 million. The charter tuition reimbursement is $2 million. Special education tuition is $7.9 million. And that economically disadvantaged increments of is $1 million. And the homeless transportation budget is $373,000 underfunded. So statewide, Chapter 70 is being underfunded by $17 million and two. So that's what, that's what the state is facing, and as you know, we are facing not being able to count 1,800 students for us to be reimbursed by. Thank you, Madam President.
Anybody else? All right, that's two public announcements. Counselor Rodriguez?
Two basketball announcements. Tomorrow is the Chelsea High playoff game. They're in the state tournament this year. The game's at 7:00 o'clock. We're hosting it this year, and they ask us all fans to wear black, so come out and support your youth. Another basketball announcement, March 16th is our All-Star Weekend for CYBL. It starts at 5:30 at the Williams School. We have the Junior League playing and the Senior League playing, and this year, for the first time, we will also have our coaches play the Fire Department. So if you have nothing to do on March 16th, come out and support the youth again, and it's only a dollar to come watch.
Counselor Tejada?
Yeah, so this morning I saw in my mailbox a letter to fill out the census, and I just want to tell our residents, all of our neighbors, very important that we fill out the census so that we can get funding for all those programs that, that people need. So an accurate count is important. So you'll see that letter. I got it, I'm sure. Okay.
Counselor Recupero?
My public announcement is that Pierce, uh, Pierce Park, is that Pierce Park, right? Port Park?
Port.
Port Park is opened. It was closed for a little while due to a fence that was broken. Now it's open again. So if anybody wants to go there, it's open. And so usted quiere andar en el parque, Marginal Street, ahora está abierto. Antes estaba cerrado, estaba cerrado porque alguien estaba roto. Él está relando eso, usted, toda la gente que quiere usarlo puede usarlo otra vez. Gracias.
Counselor Robinson?
My public announcement, actually, I'd like to congratulate my daughter, who coaches at MIT. They actually won the league title for the first time in MIT history, and they became eligible for Division III NCAA tournament, which unfortunately, they're being shipped up to Rochester to play. And that'll happen on Friday, and just wanted to give a shout-out to the MIT team and congratulate them.
Thank you.
Moments of silence?
Yeah, I have a couple of announcements. Tomorrow at 6:00 p.m., we are having a subcommittee where our planning develop, planning department is coming to make a housing plan presentation. That meeting will be held in our conference room at 6:00 p.m. On Wednesday, the Chelsea Black community is having a Black History Month celebration at the Williams Middle School at 6?
Five.
At 5:00 p.m. Everyone is welcome to attend. On Thursday, in the conference room as well, we, the counselors, will be meeting with Mass Department of Transportation. They're coming to speak to the council regarding the Viaduct project that will be happening soon here in the city. The public is welcome to attend, but there won't be any public input at that meeting. That is a meeting simply for Mass, Dot, and the city council. And again, that's Thursday at 6:00. And again, Friday, as Shakur Sanford spoke during public speaking, there's an event over at the Boys and Girls Club at 6:00 p.m. for young people. And again, anyone is welcome to attend. If anybody has any questions, you could feel free to reach out to either Counselor Rodriguez or anybody here at the office. We all have information. You could just call City Hall, and we can let you know how to register. Moments of silence?
Moment of silence for Bobby Glass, who passed away this past weekend, unfortunately to a asthma attack, and also a longtime.
Chelsea person, family, Wayne Mohan's wife, Rose, who passed away.
Also want to have a moment of silence for the 17 people that were shot down at the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. Our kids should never have to worry about losing their lives when they're attending school.
Also, a moment of silence for Ernest Corvias Senior, who passed away this week, 16 of the residents of the park.
A heck of a nice guy, and will be sadly missed.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just a moment of silence for families of the women and the girls who passed away this past week and the previous week.
Thank you.